Ladies and gentlemen, at this time I'd like to introduce Deputy Sheriff Pete Senko, who served United States Army Eightieth Motor Transportation Division for Fort Leonard Wood in Missouri, and he has been Lackawanna County Sheriff since 2010. I'd like to thank you for your service. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Commissioners. Anybody, please rise, put right hand over heart. Any former soldiers, you can salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
To the states of America. To the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice and justice in all.
Thank you, Pete.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Ladies and gentlemen, you know, for the last three years, three years and so many months, we've always, we always talk about our servicemen and women that have lost their lives defending our country, and we always talk about our first responders. And, you know, when we first really started this, I never thought it would be to a point where like, like, I'm talking about an average of at least three law enforcement people that are dying, deputy sheriffs, feds, police, you name it, corrections, it's, it's real rampant, and I, I never thought, like, it's hundreds at this, hundreds in the last three years. And I would just like to just say, you know what I mean, that our first responders really deserve our utmost respect. They protect us in our homes, they protect us at work, they protect the streets, they're a first line of defense against terrorism. And please, like, you know, if you're told by someone in law enforcement what to do and how to do it, listen, you know, I mean, that's their job, you know, and it's, you know, it's not an easy job, and they want to get home with their family, just like every one of us does. And they give us the opportunity to be able to do that because they're making sure those that are on the street that are committing crimes are kept off the streets, and they're making sure that we're safe. So please, you know, just really keep them your thoughts and prayers. This time I'd like to announce Sergeant Stephen Henkel, who succumbed to a gunshot wound sustained in a highway stop. He's Sullivan County Sheriff's Department Office in Tennessee. Also, we have Midland Police Department, Texas. Police Officer Nathan Heldenberg was shot and killed while responding to a burglar or armed at a residence. Please keep these heroes in our thoughts and prayers, and their families and friends, and what they do for us every day. Just a moment of silence. I'd like to bring this Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners meeting to order Wednesday, March 6, 2019, at 10:00 a.m. in the Commissioners' Conference Room at 123 Wyoming Avenue at the Lackawanna County Government Center at the Globe. I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Malley.
Yes.
Yes. We're going to go right into proclamation presentations. Do we have someone here from United Cerebral Palsy of Northeast Pennsylvania? Would you like to come up to the podium? Let's talk about United Cerebral Palsy and how the viewing audience might be able to help, or, you know, or be involved in the organization and, you know, contribute to whatever you may need.
Okay, thank you very much. Good morning. My name is Sarah Drab. I am the Chief Executive Officer with United Cerebral Palsy of Northeastern Pennsylvania. March is Cerebral Palsy Awareness Month, and it also is Intellectual Disabilities Awareness Month. We are a private nonprofit organization. We provide supports and services to individuals with disabilities. We serve individuals primarily who do have an intellectual disability and may also have other co-occurring disabilities. Like many organizations in our area, we were founded by a core group of parents whose young adults were looking for work activities and things to do. We were a little over 66 years old. We've been in Lackawanna County since then, and from those original starts of looking for opportunities for young adults with cerebral palsy, and as times have changed and services have been made available and funding for those services has happened, we've grown into the organization we are today. We do residential services, Adult Day services, we have a advocacy program, we are an early intervention provider, burst a tree, in Lackawanna and Susquehanna, Wayne Counties, and we also are the conduit to what's called the Assistive Technology Resource Center for a six-county area. On a whole, we probably touch about 500 lives a year, and depending on what those supports and services may need. We appreciate the opportunity to be here today and to let everybody know about Cerebral Palsy Awareness Month and Intellectual Disabilities Awareness Month, and we appreciate the support of our community and ensuring that the people that we support and serve live the lives that they're looking to do and looking to be. I'm not sure if you have any questions for me or anything you'd like me to touch on.
I'd like to thank you for what you do every day, and we'd like to thank those parents because, you know, back in that, at that time, no one had a clue.
Exactly.
They were concerned about their children. You know, I mean, just like any child, any parent, you know, I mean, you want to make sure your child's protected, safe, feeling well, you know, become productive adults, and you know, I mean, you're, I mean, you want to make sure that your children outlive you. You know, I mean, that's what I think a parent's job is, their ultimate job is.
Exactly, and, and again, we serve all age groups. We serve young children, we serve adolescents, we serve young adults, we serve seniors. We serve individuals across the board, and it is our primary mission to support those individuals as they build and lead their lives in the community. What is it they want? What do they want to do? Where do they want to be? And how do they want to be? And it's our role and function and our privilege to be able to support them as that happens in their lives. So, it really is our honor, and we appreciate, you know, the opportunity.
We're thrilled to have you here.
Thank you.
We, we have an understanding what's, you know, I mean, what you do and how much your impact is immense to the community. Commissioner Cummings?
Yeah, do you provide housing as well, or no? Do you help in that area?
Housing in the terms of we provide residential services, we do operate what are called licensed community living arrangements.
That's right, yeah.
So what people refer to as group homes, yes, we do. Yes.
That's, that's such a difficult field to work, and you have to be very compassionate and understanding. And are you having a hard time finding staff, or are you okay on staffing?
Across the state, actually, and unfortunately, across the country, there is a staffing crisis in regards to have, being able to recruit and retain the staff that we do need to support individuals in their homes.
Yeah, well, you're very dedicated.
It really truly is. As you said, there's a lot to that, there's a lot of things that happen. We are licensed by the state, there's a lot of things that we do, there's a lot of responsibility placed on people in ensuring that the individuals we support are safe and happy and healthy and living the lives that they want to live. So, yes, we are always actively recruiting for staff.
If someone wanted to call for employment, where would they reach you at?
Our office number is 570-347-3357, and our office, our main office is at 425 Wyoming Avenue, just down the street. People are more than welcome to come in. They can also go online, ucpnepa.org. We have our application online. It can be submitted by email. We just changed our email, info@ucpnepa.org, and can stop or fax it.
Thank you so much, and thank you for the work that you do. I greatly appreciate it, and thank you for coming in.
Thank you, we appreciate being here.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Thank you for your good works, and keep up the great job, and hopefully you'll be able to continue on and be even more successful in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
March is Cerebral Palsy Month, and we're going to be reading a dedicat, reading a proclamation in just a minute. Also, Raise Your Awareness, UCP of Northeast PA is asking for local communities to go green. It's a good month to do it in, on March 25, 2019, to honor the 17 million individuals and their families affected with cerebral palsy. So everyone, please remember, March 25, 2019 is Go Green to honor the 17 million individuals and those families, you know, I'm think, you know, thank God for those families, they're, what a great support they have, and like, in, and the organization, especially United Cerebral Palsy of Northeast PA that's here today. It really matters to all of us. I had a good friend, I'm not going to say his name, he just passed away, he had cerebral palsy all the way through, from, from elementary school and through high school, and he, he was just like one of us, he was one of my closest friends. You know, I mean, he had his issues because of cerebral palsy, but he was, you know, I mean, we all treated him the same. He went out for sports and stuff, it was tough on him, you know, I mean, but he, we always made sure that he was part of the crew, he always was. He passed away a couple of months ago, he was a good, good person.
Sorry for your loss.
Yeah, I'd love to say his name, but no, he was a, he was one of a kind. He had, he had a family, couple, couple of children.
Well, I think that's a reality, that, you know, that is part of what, you know, we look to do and talk about.
And he had the outward, like, I mean, it was there, you know.
People with disabilities are people.
Yeah.
People want to live their lives in the community.
Yeah.
They want, people want to live their lives.
Yeah, I knew him since.
They want to go to work.
Elementary and graduated with them, yeah.
They want to go to church.
Yes.
They want to do, they want to be involved in things, they want to volunteer, they want, they want to live their lives.
Yeah.
And, and we're fortunate enough to be able to help support them in doing that and being part of our community.
And it's, it's interesting that people that have such disabilities are actually out there working and, you know, doing what they need to do to have a productive life. So many don't, but yet we have these people who are actually, you know, fighting the good fight and out there working, and God bless them for what they do because, you know, they're not sitting at home, they're actually out in the community working, which is a testament to you for the work that you do. So thank you so much for being an inspiration to them and to all of us.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
We have a proclamation, whereas United Cerebral Palsy of Northeast Pennsylvania provides opportunities and resources to individuals with disabilities as they build and lead their lives in the community, whereas UCP of Northeast PA provides an array of services for children, adults with various disabilities, including advocacy, home and community supports, and education in Lackawanna, Susquehanna, Wayne, Wyoming, Pike, Bradford, Monroe, and Sullivan Counties. Whereas the UCP of Lackawanna County first opened the doors in 1953 and established a home office in 1958. And you know that all started with like a bunch of parents in a household.
Parents.
And somebody said, you know, like, we got to really do something about this.
Always parents.
Our children need help, and they need to find a way to get them that home.
Stepped up and did it.
Yeah. Established a home office in 1958 and began providing early intervention services and home services in 1965. In 1975, the first community living arrangement was opened with 20 years, and 20 years later, the assistive technology program was created to assist both individuals with any disabilities and older individuals in the community. Whereas on Monday, March 25, 2019, UCP of Northeast Pennsylvania will celebrate Cerebral Palsy Day in honor of the 17 million individuals and their families affected with cerebral palsy. Now, therefore, on behalf of the 214,000 citizens, we, Patrick O'Malley, Jaron O'Teriani, Alarion A. Cummings, Commissioners, the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do hereby support the United Cerebral Palsy of Northeast Pennsylvania into the cerebral palsy awareness efforts and proclaim March 19th, at March of 2019, as Cerebral Palsy Awareness Month in Lackawanna County. Would you like to come forward?
Yes.
Sure, come on up. Congratulations, thank you so much for your work.
Thank you, thank you.
Phone over.
Barb is our board president.
Oh, I do, congratulations.
Congratulations, thanks for all your work.
You see, Patrick's neck, boy. How are you?
Barb is our board president.
Thank you very much. And Ray is the Director of Communications.
We'll put Barb in the middle.
We'll put Sarah in the middle.
Perfect. There we go.
Tall, tall, short, tall.
There you go. You can hold it.
Just a little this way.
Call Kathy's school.
Which one?
Can I touch your water bottle?
Short.
Here we are, everybody, one, two, three, smile, we'll take a couple of them.
Slash now. Put your hand up.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thanks again. Again, thank you so very much.
Bye.
You know, there's a lot of great organizations doing great things in Lackawanna County. United Cerebral Palsy absolutely is, so anybody in the viewing audience that'd like to be involved, please reach out to United Cerebral Palsy of Northeast PA. At this time, I'd like, is Eric Basart here? Eric, would you like to come up to the podium? This is, and this is near, this is near and dear.
It's our business.
What's that?
No business?
Didn't have one yet, for next one, they'll have one. Eric, saw you in the paper, and I had an opportunity to get down to see your mural down at the, down at the Steamtown, at the marketplace of the Steamtown, and, and this Board of Commissioners has always been there, you know, to try to stop, you know, this crisis with the opioids. And I think your mural, and I, and I wish I could, I wish I blew up the picture, but it's a picture of a, of a grandmother holding a baby because the parents just can't be there because of the fact that they have an addiction, or they could be just not, they could be dead. And it really hits home, and it's real heart-wrenching, and, you know, we see it every day, we see it in the obituaries. Some people say what's going on, some people just might not, but it's, it's happening.
It's bad.
You know, and this Board of Commissioners, one of the first counties in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to sue the pharmaceutical companies.
That's right.
Because all of us in this room, we trust our family physicians, our surgeons, our doctors, whoever it may be, and they were misled too.
That's right.
And they were told that these drugs weren't going to be addictive, and they were, and a lot of good people died because of this. And brought you in because your picture is just one of those pictures that just really hits home and shows the reality of what it is, you know? And I've seen it at different elementary schools, a lot of grandparents watching their kids, and I know some of them are probably because of addiction, I know it, so.
Can I see?
We'd like to just, tell us about, how did you come up with it? Like, it was really brilliant, actually, I thought it was a brilliant picture, really depicted what, you know, I mean, what's, what the end is of it all?
Yeah, well, when you're making a mural, really, the, the main goal of it, aside from beautifying the community, is you want to kind of create and inspire change and improve the community that the mural's in, right? So I wanted it to be thought-provoking, but also kind of beautiful to look at, but, yeah, I mean, I wanted to focus on, rather than a more morbid issue.
Yeah.
I wanted to focus on like the, the loving aspect of it, like the, sort of the compassion that the grandmother has for the child.
Sure.
And then it sort of provokes thought about the deeper undertones and the darker things and the death, addiction, overdose, but you know, you're, it's not like, I didn't want to put that up on the wall.
Yeah.
I still wanted the wall to look.
The picture says it all, like, you can look at it, what it, what it says to me is it says that the grandma, who's already raised her children, is in her golden years, is stepping up the plate again to raise another generation, or, and, and hoping that their children, their babies, which even though you're adult, your parents always feel that you're their babies, no matter what, I still feel a way, gets my, to my 17-year-old, 11-year-old, that, that their child would get better and be able to take over and be a parent again, you know?
Yeah, that's definitely what I was focusing on, like, the, with the symbolism and everything and the, and the keys, and the, I mean, a lot of times the grandparents, because of the high financial strain of raising a child again, they have to re-enter the workforce with menial jobs.
Yeah.
That's why I included the fast food worker uniform.
Yeah. I was, yeah, I, I was, I was, I didn't really understa, I didn't get that part, but yeah, and I totally agree, yeah. Yeah, they're on a fixed income, they got a baby, you know, similar, that costs a lot of money, diapers, yeah, it's a big, it's a big undertaking, it really is. But it really hit home with the Board of Commissioners, so.
Thank you.
Just wanted to bring you in and acknowledge you for what you did, and we got a certificate for you, but this time, Commissioner O'Malley?
Yeah, you know, I'm just looking at the picture, excuse me, bright purple poppy flowers, the plant source of heroin, surround the two, a kind of wanted to show that it's not an inherently bad thing, the flower, it's kind of what societally we've done with it, perverted it. He said, ultimately, I want it to be aesthetically beautiful, the point of a mural should be brighten our neighborhood and then maybe even inspire a little positive change. You know, when, when I first got involved in this, I got involved because of the fact that I've had many, well, I grew up in a foster home, so, you know, I was raised by parents that took me in out of the goodness of their heart because my parents could not raise me due to addiction. You know, I, I've seen it as a nurse, I've seen it throughout the years, I've seen it in my family. I deal with it every single day, just like so many of us do. So I was fighting this for years, this opioid crisis, trying to learn how it started, where it began, and, you know, I first went after the doctors for prescribing it, and the doctors pushed back at me and said, no, it's not us, we're being made by the state and the federal government to do this because pain was changed to a vital sign. So I was like, well, how did that happen? Well, Purdue Pharmaceutical came in with their huge marketing campaign and twisted the narrative and their marketing with all the money that these companies have, made people believe that Americans weren't treating their veterans for pain well enough. So the VA decided to help push that narrative of putting pain as a vital sign. What did that do? That created these little smiley faces we see when you go into the doctor's office, you know, how they say, can you rate your pain, you know, on a scale from 1 to 10, and negative unhappy face and a happy face. And then the insurance companies got involved, and funding was denied to those that weren't treating their, their patients' pain well enough through the satisfaction survey results. And it was a downward spiral where doctors were being sued based on the fact that they weren't treating pain well enough. This is how it happened just from 2001, and, and a crisis was created, a manufactured crisis, by Big Pharma and Big Government, and they created this, this crisis that all of us had, have had to watch. And, you know, when I went out to National Association of County Organizations and, you know, told them, why aren't we suing the pharmaceutical companies because they're at fault for this, along with the government? And they said that there, there was two other places that did, and I came back and told my fellow commissioners, and they started making calls, and we got it done, the first county to sue pharmaceutical companies, and, you know, I'm very proud of that, and I, you know, I thank my fellow commissioners for working with me on that because never in a million years did I think, from going from where I came from to right now, that I would be able to affect change in such a big way and hold people accountable for what they've done to, you know, my parents, my family members, my fellow citizens in this area and in the state of Pennsylvania. So your mural represents that whole entire thing. Thank you so much. It's, it's beautiful, and I greatly appreciate the work you're doing and for bringing the attention to the public. That means so much to me. Great job.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Teriani?
It's a beautiful mural. Your artistic flair is amazing.
Beautiful.
How you came up with the concept and put it all together and gave it to the citizens of Lackawanna County is really appreciated, and you're a young man, keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very nice.
This epidemic has hit every family, or at least friends or somebody that you know, it really has. My family, it's hit other Commissioners' families, it really has, it's been, you know, it's been very trying. And like you said, your mural really speaks volume to the effect and the after effect of what it could be, or what it is, what it is, what's going on, actually. So we're just very happy to have you here at the Board of Commissioners to acknowledge you and acknowledge what a great job you did over at the mall. It looks great, it really does. We have a certificate of recognition, and the County Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize Eric Basart in honor of achieving a designation of an individual providing great works in Lackawanna County, given the sixth day of March of 2019 by the Board of Commissioners. Would you like to come forward?
Congratulations.
That's wonderful, thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you. You're welcome. So happy, good shooting job.
Thank you. I'll. Flash. Good, thank you very much.
Good work, great job.
Thanks.
Congratulations, thank you. It's funny how a simple plant can destroy a nation.
Yeah. Thanks, Eric, have a good day.
Thank you, ladies.
Tracy, you're right, it is hot in here.
Okay, opportunity for the public to address board on agenda items only.
Approving the current payables. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the following payables. Lackawanna County General Fund numbers from 277-689 through 277-942 inclusive totaling Electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts totaling $4,711,764.18.
Okay. Gary, is everything up to snuff?
Yes, Commissioners, all payables are in order and have been audited, and there are no legal fees, legal invoices regarding the prison probe.
Does the board have any questions?
No, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion approving current payables. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
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 Approving the audit for the Land Bank Authority. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the Lackawanna County Land Bank Authority audit for the year ending, ended December 31, 2018, to Joseph M. Alu and Associates, 321 Spruce Street, Suite 1000, Scranton, PA, 18503, to cost $1,700.
Tom?
Good morning, Commissioners. As we do every year, most of the component unit audits that we do in the county that we need to get done for the, the county's annual audit, as well as, the land bank is not a component unit, but it's a related entity. So every year, I come to the Board of Commissioners, and we usually have a handful of audits that we ask the Commissioners to approve, the engagement with many varied firms, and in this case, the land bank, land bank audit has been done by Joe Alu and Associates for a couple of years now, and we're just asking to renew that contract.
Okay, does the board have any questions?
They pay for that in their, out of their own budget, right? We don't pay for that.
They do, we don't pay for that, Commissioner, that's correct.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? I'd like to make a motion approving the audit of the Land Bank Authority. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
Yes.
19-0046?
Approving the audit for the Redevelopment Authority. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the Lackawanna County Redevelopment Authority audit for the year ended December 31, 2018, to Joseph M. Alu and Associates, 321 Spruce Street, Suite 1000, Scranton, PA, 18503, to cost $1,700. And again, Lackawanna County CFO, Tom Durkin, to speak.
Thank you. Again, very similar to the land bank audit, the Redevelopment Authority needs an annual audit so that we can include that information in the annual county audit, and Joe Alu has done this audit for at least the last four or five years, and we're just asking to renew that engagement.
Does the board have any questions?
No.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion approving audit for the Redevelopment Authority. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Teriani?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes.
And if I may add, excuse me, Commissioner, this is also paid by the Redevelopment Authority, not by the county, so.
I saw that in their contract, thanks.
Nice tie.
Thank you, Commissioners, thank you very much.
Yes, we're all going to the green today.
That's right.
Everybody's got the green today.
You know, I forgot to bring this up, I'd like to welcome our new Chief of Staff here today, Fran Pantuso, who moved up through the ranks, is doing a great job. Well, what do you think, so far, everything going all right so far?
Hey, women are taking over the world, man.
Great job, Fran. Okay, 19-0047?
Designating an agent for Pima applications. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby designate the Director of Roads and Bridges as the agent to the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency, Pima, and does hereby authorize the agent to fill the necessary applications and required forms and documents for the purpose of obtaining financial assistance relating to Pima for disaster reimbursements related to Lackawanna County under the Robert T. Stafford Disaster Relief and Emergency Assistance Act. Here to speak on it is our Director of Roads and Bridges, Larry Lucasik.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Hi, Larry.[1783.13]
Hi, Larry.
On August 10th to August 15th of 2018, Lackawanna County and surrounding areas were hit with some pretty severe storms, and we suffered a lot of damage, as some of our neighboring counties did also. FEMA came in and did an evaluation of all the damage, and on November 27th of 2018, they declared Lackawanna County disaster area, which means now we can go back and get money to recoup some of the costs that we used to fix the damage and also for some money for the things we didn't fix yet. But to do that, we need a designation of applicant agent signed, and we need a resolution passed, making me eligible to sign all the necessary paperwork. And that's what I'm here to ask for today.
Good. Commissioner Cummings?
Yeah, I was just curious because I saw the previous commissioners in here. Is this an older resolution, or?
Yeah, that's probably one of the older. I've been through four disasters already, five disasters already.
Commissioner, that's every so many years it has to be renewed. So this is a renewal of the process to allow Larry, as our Director of Roads and Bridges. The old one expired or is expiring, I believe. So that was signed under the former Board of Commissioners.
Because it's 2014. So are we going to have a new signed one for current, or is this going to remain the one that is?
No, we're going to have a new one for you to sign. Yeah, just a new one for you to sign.
Thank you.
Larry, I'd like to thank you for the great job that you guys do with snow removal and making sure the streets are safe and making sure our bridges are in good shape.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We got a lot of compliments on your work, Larry. So you did a good job. You know, when we did have all those snowstorms, our roads were taken care of. Thank you for your work.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
No, that's a great job, Larry.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion designating an agent for Pima applications. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thanks, Larry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
19-0048?
Approving a modified intermediate punishment grant. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the project modification submission for additional funding of $6,000 per year for transportation for the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency, PCCD, grant application submitted by Lackawanna County Treatment Court for the County Intermediate Punishment, CIP, treatment program. Here to speak on that is Mary Liz Loftus.
Hi, Mary. How are you? Good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
Go ahead.
So I am looking to add some more money. They, Pennsylvania Crime, sent out an email last month saying that if we needed more money, we can do a project modification to the grant. So that's what I'm requesting, that we do an extra $500 per month to help pay for bus passes and also for taxi service when the buses aren't running at night. Most of our clients don't have their driver's license. Some of them just can't afford to own a car. So this is a big help for them to get to their outpatient appointments, come down to meet us at probation, get to Treatment Court. So we're just looking to add a little bit more money to our transportation budget with this grant.
Commissioner Cummings?
This is specifically for transportation for those that don't have vehicles, correct? That's it? Or?
Correct. And/or don't have their driver's license. The people, some people in DUI court get the bus passes also. So we have used other grants, and the Treatment Court Advocacy Center also has grant money that we use to pay for the bus passes, but we're getting more and more people in Treatment Court, so.
Yeah, it's terrible, isn't it?
It is. So just like you guys were saying earlier, you know, it definitely is an epidemic. And, you know, as far as my role also, anything that you guys need help for with this, I am willing to help also, just to let you know if you need me to go anywhere or do anything.
Thank you.
Thank you for all your work. Greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. Well, let's sit down. Thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
I have no questions.
I think this is good. This will be helpful for people that are, you know, that might not have the money, or they just don't have their license. And they have to get to these meetings, and they have to get downtown. If they don't, they get in trouble.
Correct.
We got to make sure that everybody, you know.
Most of them don't. Come on, they have a job. It's terrible. It's terrible what's happening.
I'd like to make a motion approving a modifying and intermediate punishment grant. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. 19-0049?
I'm sorry, Commissioner, can I just ask one more? How did they become eligible for this? How did they know how to apply? Is this something that they're told when they come in for rehab, or?
Oh, for Treatment Court?
Yeah.
They, their lawyer.
Their lawyers are where they're... Okay. What if they don't have a lawyer?
A public defender.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
They can help them. Also, just to let you guys know, I'm going to send you an invite, but we have our graduation on May 9th at 5:00 PM over at Lackawanna County. If you're interested in coming to that, it's nice to see the hope.
We'd like to be able, yeah.
See the people get better. So I'll email it over to Tracy.
Yeah, it's good to see the end result. That's really good.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It's hard for them. Thank you. 19-0049?
Approving provider contracts for the Office of BHIDEI. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the provider contracts between the Department of Human Services, Lackawanna Sasquahana Behavioral Health Intellectual Disability Early Intervention Program, and their providers for the fiscal year of 2018 through 2019, as attached hereto. Here to speak on this is Mary Ann Colbert.
Good morning, Mary Ann. How are you?
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
So presented today for your approval are the Lackawanna Sasquahana Behavioral Health Intellectual Disabilities Early Intervention Program annual contracts. We are contracting for fiscal year 1819 with 50 human service providers to meet the needs of approximately 17,500 people in Lackawanna and Sasquahana Counties. As you see from the information that we have presented for you, some of the highlights of these services, housing and supports for people with serious mental illness, sustained housing initiative for people with serious mental illness incarcerated at the Lackawanna County Prison, emergency and crisis services, day supports for people with an intellectual disability and/or autism, housing supports for people with an intellectual disability and/or autism, employment supports, case management services for children and adults, occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech therapy, special needs instruction for infants and toddlers and their parents and guardians, and an expansion of forensic case management services for people with serious mental illness incarcerated at the Lackawanna County Prison. And I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Does the board have any questions? Okay. I'd like to make a motion approving a provider contract, the Office of BHIDEI. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thanks for coming, Mary Ann.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
You too.
That's 13, 13 mil. Is that what we're doing? 13 mil on this? Yeah. A lot of money.
Yeah. Okay, 15, excuse me, 19-0053?
Appointment to the Lackawanna County Housing Authority. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby reappoint the following individual to the Lackawanna County Housing Authority. Christopher Patrick, 116 Poplar Street, Elephant, Pennsylvania, 18447, a five-year term to expire on December 31, 2022.
Okay. Any questions? I'd like to make a motion for the appointment of Lackawanna County Housing Authority. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
No.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. 19-0054?
Appointment to the Lackawanna County Stadium Authority. Be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby appoint the following individual to the Lackawanna County Stadium Authority. Kevin O'Shea, Elephant, a five-year term to begin immediately and expire on December 31, 2022.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion for the appointment to Lackawanna County Stadium Authority. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner O'Terriani?
Yes.
Commissioner Cummings?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Malley?
Yes. Thanks. Opportunity for the public to address the board.
Bob, you might want to wait.
Just try being first again.
You might want to wait.
I'm Wallace Scranton. Fran, congratulations. Can't think of a better person that we have in your position, and applaud the Commissioners for doing it. She earned that right, I'll tell you that. It's nice to see people who have been around step up the ladder with the dedication she has. I've known Fran literally for a lifetime, so again, congratulations. I'd like to talk a little bit about Lieutenant Governor's meeting that I attended. Commissioner Cummings attended.
A lot of people in this audience attended too, Bob.
Pardon?
A lot of people in the audience attended too.
No, I understand. I understand. I've seen them all here. But today, I'm addressing the board. I addressed them at the meeting.
I know.
Okay. And disappointed some that we only had one Scranton Councilman show up, Mr. Donahue, and the rest, and this is something that's critical and very important. It's important in a lot of aspects. This is recreational marijuana. We're talking about, we're not talking about medical. You know, falls into a lot of different categories. Quite honestly, the Lieutenant Governor sent me a response thanking me for attending there and if I could do anything with him in the future. So the purpose I was there is on the safety end of it and what it means. Being in the transportation industry and having been in towing and recovery for over 57 years, I've seen just about every type of horrific accident you could think of and for all different circumstances. Seen them because of drugs, I've seen them because of drinking, I've seen them just incompetent. But we could take a 16-year-old kid, and I'll just use that as an example. Let him smoke his recreational marijuana, let him drive down on a snow-covered road, but yet we can't send our experienced truck drivers out on the highway because they're not qualified. But we could let somebody smoke recreational marijuana and drive in snow that they've never driven on. And then one day, we wonder why we see the hearse going by and everybody feeling bad, putting out flowers and plants and saying, "Jesus, he was a great kid." I've seen them hit trucks head-on. I've seen just about every kind of horrific accident you could think of. I was awarded by the Florida State Police an accommodation for my heroic actions. I went head-to-head with a wrong-way driver on I-75 in Ellington, Florida, up by Sarasota, and I stopped her. When I went to get her out of the car, and she finally put the window down before I had to smash it, the whiff of marijuana came out. She was high on marijuana and drinking. She was out to kill herself. I got her out of the car, got the car off the road. She tried running back into the highway, and I had to hold on to her and had a big R, even with a 911 operator as to what my emergency was. But this is a drug. Whether you want to call it a plant from God, whatever you want to call it, it's an hallucination. It creates a problem, and everybody could have their own opinion on it. But when it happens to you, and it's one of your family members, you can't talk about it anymore because it's now become a reality. It's okay to smoke it, it's okay to do what you want to do and say, "Jesus, it doesn't bother me. I'm great." Wrong. It does bother. You want to see a guy fly in a plane, police officer carrying a weapon? How about an EMT when you're in an emergency? We talked about first responders. I am a first responder, and I'm EMT certified. I've been in all aspects. I drive a fire truck up in Troop. Do I need to do it? No. But at least I'm not smoking a joint when I go out on it. And that's the difference. How do we control our drivers? How do you control the prison and tell the prisoner, "He can't smoke recreational marijuana at the jail now"? You're going to have more constitutional issues than you could even think of by trying to stop this and stop somebody from doing it or allowing them to do it. I'm not here to advocate it. I'm totally opposed to it. I made that very, very clear. Other people have their opinions, and that's what this country's about. We're all welcome to an opinion. But I was disappointed that I didn't see more public officials because you were the guys ultimately who are going to have to go to battle for all of us in this county and throughout this state. Joining states have it. Go to Colorado. I have relatives, I have family. I've been in and out of Colorado. See what's going on out there, and then say it's great. Commissioner Cummings stood up. She knows about it. She's a nurse. She's seen it from the medical end. She's seen it from both sides. And I've seen it in my industry and other industries. I've traveled all over the world, so it's not like I'm just some novice standing up here, running off at the mount. People have to understand, while you may be self-serving for yourself, take into consideration the life you take tomorrow doesn't come back again of a child, a family. Think very seriously what you're trying to do here. You're walking around with a loaded weapon.
Yeah.
Just when you decide to pull the trigger. So that's where we are on that, and that's my opinion, and I'll go to my grave with it because if we allow this to happen, shame on all of us. And I can't help some of the people that are all for it and think it's the greatest thing since cottage cheese. It's the wrongest idea because your life is in your hands, but so is our life in your hands as well.
That's right.
When you get on the road.
Okay, guys, listen, listen, listen.
You'll get your opportunity.
No, I'm speaking, I'm speaking in general. Okay, I'm looking at your face. Guys, 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 guys.
And I'm going to tell you.
Okay, guys, guys, guys.
Bob.
Guys, guys, whoa, 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 whoa. There's no, listen, people come to the podium, they have their time to speak, okay? Okay? Now, that's for everyone to come up. What's that now?
They could all get their opportunity. I made this a general statement, as I did at the Governor's meeting, was a general meeting to everybody, and I had people challenging me right then and there, just as I'm getting here. They're all welcome to their opinion. It's on their head, not mine. Because my conscience is clear, no employee of mine will ever, ever get in a vehicle smoking a joint or having anything to do with it, whether it's medical or otherwise. They will be restricted for a period of time before they drive a vehicle on the highway and put us at risk as the owners. The other part was, and I've been bringing this up time and time again, is Joe Joyce wearing two hats in the tax office. Joyce and Kozlowski, or Ron did Kolodziewski, created a living hell for our companies by filing a tax judgment on me personally rather than against the real estate that still exists to this day, forcing us to put companies in bankruptcy because we had no choice, including myself that was on personally. And my personal assets fund all the corporations, and it's put them all in jeopardy. New equipment, different things we were doing. In fact, we had a major liquidation of a lot of stuff in close five locations because of this action. And I brought it here time and time again, and that man still sits in that same position as the solicitor and the tax collector. It's a conflict of interest, and it's putting this county on a road to disaster. And I brought it up time and time again. You need to make a change. You can no longer allow this to go on. Commissioner Cummings had brought it up a long time ago when they were talking about putting judgments on individuals. She's the only one that stood for it. You guys are allowing it to take place. You got to do something about it. The responsibility, again, lies on your side of defense. I brought up about prison pillows. I may not make the next prison board meeting, but we got hundreds of thousands of dollars for every kind of study, but you can't give them pillows that are reusable at the jail by, bless you, by sitting there and saying, "Oh, they could buy them at the commissary." They get ripped off on the phones, they get ripped off on the commissary, and they got to pay for their medical. You could at least fund the pillows. They're reusable. That's the least we could do with that prison. I spent the time there, and I told you they were wrong. Created a lot of issues. I said about the inadequate medical treatment you received there from Zalogo and his group, yet you guys still persist to put them there. Go talk to prisoners. Go to the jail and find out what really goes on. And I think you'll make the changes. But if I can't make the next prison board meeting, since you guys are the fund for the prison board, buy the pillows. I spoke to Mike Lindell's company, and we could get them at wholesale price that qualify for the jail. You know, this past week has been a nasty week in politics. I think you're all aware of it. The character assassination on Mr. Scavo, I think is totally unjustified. I wrote a letter to the Scranton Times. Hopefully, they'll have the courage to print it. I know what it is to be around radical Islamic terrorists. I know what it is. I've been there. I've been in those countries. I've been in Kuwait, Abu Dhabi, Dubai, Iraq, Iran, Yemen. I've been there. I've done business there. I know what it is to be shot at over there. Okay? And for everybody to come in here and assassinate his character like they're doing now is pathetic over the Muslim faith. Everybody has a right to their religion, whether it's Catholic, Protestant, German, or Muslims. But to say that he was making all Muslims... But to say that he was making all Muslims know, it's a radical Islamic terrorist. Remember nine eleven? Remember the, our news reporter who had his head decapitated on TV for them? Those are the sick people that he was referencing and to be characterizing them on everybody, I think is totally wrong because of political parties. You know, let's choose our candidates by the individual. And not what people want to try and represent, and I think it's totally wrong. And that goes for all of us that have all ran for office. I have, you guys are here, and there'll be other people running. But to do what they're doing and the press and the media over this, they've got to go really learn what the heck they're talking about. And when you have, I have many friends that are Muslims. Here in the States and abroad. They're not sitting here coming around and saying, we're going to blow up your city tomorrow morning. And that's the difference that goes on. And the kid that did the mural, I think is credible. You know, it shows what some of our youth really know, really think, and are making a difference in the direction we should go in because they are the future leaders. And they have to get that through their head today. You know, the last thing we got to do is just let this go on and on and on. With the drugs, the marijuana, bury our heads in the sand. See where your future leaders take you. And it's down the road to disaster. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Name, name and address?
Yep, Jeff Zick, 127 West Market Street.
I'm sorry, what was your name?
Jeff Zick, Z-I-C-K.
Oh, Jeff Zick, okay.
All right, lies and hate, you know, that's all I hear. Last Saturday was a great show of democracy. Lackawanna County played host to our governor. You know, which is a pretty big honor. Well, the citizens of Lackawanna County and surrounding counties who can make it came down and had, you know, had their say. Which majority in the support for legalization for adults, adults recreation, not sixteen-year-old kids driving down the road. This is lies and manipulation. All right, I'm one of the future leaders he's talking about. Lackawanna County is, you know, not deciding, you know, the district attorney himself is deciding not to decriminalize cannabis possession in small amounts in the city of Scranton because, you know, he's afraid of, you know, I don't know what he's afraid of, but when it comes down to it, Lackawanna County has not arrested cocaine dealers and, you know, people who, you know, possess cocaine and opium. You know, we're looking at thirteen arrests so far this year. Well, that's at least what they're reporting on the uniform, police crime report here. We have forty-five arrests for small possession of cannabis. Okay, now, you guys are asking for more money for, you know, treatment services and stuff. Well, these people who are caught with small amount cannabis are all put through treatment. All of them. Every single one of them put through treatment, you know, along with the addicts, you know, so that's, that's a good way of saving money there. And, you know, going back to that meeting we had last Saturday, Ms. Cummings couldn't even stand to stay the rest of the meeting. You know, the governor asked her to please keep it down and she just walked out the door. She walked out the door because a disabled man got up and spoke, you know, had the courage to get up to the microphone and speak in this great amount, you know.
He's no longer disabled from what he said.
I would, can I please finish my sentence?
Sure.
Um, you know, he, he spoke on the miracles that cannabis played in his life since he was a child. He got up and showed you that he can walk with, he explained his condition, he explained that he was bone-on-bone and he got up and showed you. You stormed out. You couldn't, you couldn't bear to stand there and watch that man tell his story. There are thousands of people in the state telling that story right now. And what you did was a shame to Lackawanna County. You made us famous. And that's not good. Lackawanna County is a great county. And to have this happen to our disabled people will not stand and we will not stand by it. You may not agree with us, you may spread lies. But the truth is known. This needs to stop. You know, it, it needs to end right here. No more picking on disabled people, no more picking on medical patients, you know, it's, it's got to stop.
Don't let him sit up there.
We're asking, we're asking for apology to this man. Or let her recognize, you can, you not listen to me. They refuse to listen. Have a great day.
Hi, my name is Lacy Walker. I live at 204 Lansdowne in Clark Summit. I actually have a copy of some of the comments that Ms. Cummings made on Facebook. She said, I have just witnessed the biggest sideshow at the listening tour I have ever seen. If these are the people that are representative of this administration, we are doomed. People entered the room in a wheelchair due to a broken back and then when, or then when speaking, stand up and walk to the podium claiming the almighty pot plant healed him. Are you kidding me? Ma'am, I'm disabled. I'm sorry that I can walk and I'm sorry that my disability is upsetting to you, but cannabis gave me my life back. It didn't cure me like you asked me on your Facebook page before you blocked me. For whatever reason, because I don't really know. You're not really allowed to do that to your constituents when they're criticizing you. So you also said, potheads from across the state claiming pot-cured dogs and every ailment you could think of and they call me crazy. Wow, what a bunch of lunatics. Penn State campus listening tour with the Lieutenant Governor, it was nothing but potheads and drug dealers. And you're smiling at me. I don't understand. Can you explain to me why you're smiling at me, Ms. Cummings?
I'm not smiling at you.
Then why are you smiling?
Okay.
I'm listening to what you're saying.
But you're smirking at me, so that's why I'm wondering what you're thinking. Why, what are your, what are your feelings on your statements?
You're here basically to talk about what your thoughts are.
I am, and I'm very upset as a disabled woman. I'm very upset.
This has no bearing in this hearing. That was my personal page. That was not on my.
I'm trying to.
None of that was on my commissioner's page. That was my personal page.
On your personal page, which is public.
Listen, I'm not going to let her sit here and lie about what was on a page, okay?
I have copies of it.
Legally, I can block you on my personal page. You have no right to even be up here.
Regardless, you also threatened Joe Bickelman. Okay, and you also threatened Joe Bickelman saying, I know quite a few people in your neck of the woods. Maybe I will make calls of my own.
Right after he threatened my life.
Where? Where?
Listen, you want to bring him up to my lawyer? That's fine. I'd be happy to show my attorney all this.
Okay, and I will.
Happy to, happy to.
So, medical cannabis. You also recently said, are you kidding me? The legislator, legislature voted to legalize this stuff. You didn't even know we were legally allowed to use our medicine in this state.
Listen, are you here for
I'm here because I'm a very.
A back-and-forth with me because I have an office upstairs. I can sit down and talk with you.
I will gladly sit down and talk with you.
Okay, well, then we could do that.
Okay.
Because we have things on the agenda that we want to get done today.
Bob Wallace was allowed to sit and talk to you for like twenty minutes. About, I don't even know what. Like, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm able to come up here and speak about how I'm upset that my constituents, or I'm not represented as a constituent of this county.
With falsehoods. So either you're going to discuss issues that are on our agenda that actually deal with our county.
This is off agenda. I was told I'm allowed to speak of topics.
This is not about, this, this is about a personal page, my personal page.
Okay, so I'll talk about recreational legalization and how it can help our community.
That would be better. Thank you.
In 2017, global drug study covered hundreds of thousands of people around the world. And they erect recreational drugs from the safest to the most dangerous based on how many hospital admissions they lead to. Turns out magic mushrooms are responsible for the lowest emergency room visits, followed by cannabis, then LSD, and then cocaine. At the other end of the chart, methamphetamine, synthetic cannabis, and alcohol carried the highest risk of a trip to the emergency ward. Mushrooms, the overall hospital visit scorecard looks like point-two percent for mushrooms, point-six percent for cannabis, one percent for LSD, all the way up to almost five percent for methamphetamine and three-point-two percent for synthetic cannabis. I believe that legalizing recreational cannabis will decrease our crime rate in the city because they are false crimes. I believe that it will lead to a better prison population because we can actually help the people that are in prison for legitimate reasons instead of throwing potheads into prison for no reason. So there's my feeling on why it would benefit. We could benefit from the taxation. We could benefit from just all-around less alcohol usage, less overall drug usage elsewhere, and it's a safer choice. So there's my argument for that. And I will be making sure to make an appointment with you, Ms. Cummings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a wonderful day.
Hi, my name is Robin Guerrero. I live at 214 Hughes Street. I'm from Luzerne County. And I wasn't able to make it up to Lieutenant Governor's meeting this week, this past weekend. But what I saw on Facebook, I did watch the whole video, and what I saw on Facebook was Ms. Cummings.
This is a personal page. This has nothing to do with this meeting.
We're talking about disabilities here. She was just recognized for cerebral.
This is about, this is a commissioner's meeting.
I, as a person, worked in the disabled field. I took care of, in a state, a state institution for fifteen years. I worked with disabled individuals. Before that, I was a case manager for children and youth, disabled youth. My husband is legally blind, disabled. I was just hurt a few years ago working in the state institution. And I am having a hard time getting myself as the provider of my family to go and ask for disability because it's, it's, it's hard for me as a provider. And for you to sit and make that meme or, or spread that meme about people with disabilities.
I didn't spread that. She needs to be gavelled.
It's March Disability Awareness.
They spread that, not me. They spread that around, not me.
I'm, I'm asking for you guys to look into this and I'm asking for you to bring Ms. Cummings before an ethical committee. Because as a person who is having a hard time to go apply for disability, because I'm a very prideful woman and I took care of my husband all my life.
I don't want this continuing because I'm going to have to, like.
Okay, it's very hard. It's hard to say you're disabled and you just got, it just recognized cerebral palsy. I worked in a group home for a lot of years, Ms. Cummings. Okay, before this, we were talking about the mural and I know a lot of grandparents that are raising their children, their grandchildren, a lot. I, I have compassion for that and you have your, your, your right for your, your opinion. Mr. Bolus, is that your name? You have your right for your.
If it was about me as a commissioner, I could see, but it's a personal page.
I, I respect your opinion too, but if someone asks me if the doctor is going to smoke a joint or, or, or drink before an operation, what would I rather? I wouldn't rather him do any. Okay, we're adults, we're responsible adults and we know. I am off, I, I had a neck injury that happened at work ten years ago, seven-seven of oh-six. I've had two back fusions and now the head injury. All that happened in the state. I worked for the state for a lot of years. I gave my time to the state. They had me on fentanyl. They had me on Xanax. They had me on a hundred and twenty milligrams of morphine on top of a hundred microgram fentanyl patch a day. Then they put me on four milligrams of Xanax a day. I thought I was going to die from or on Xanax. My pain was never controllable and then they stopped it. This big thing came around. I never abused my drugs. But then this big thing came and they left us nowhere. I am not a pot smoker. I don't smoke it that much. I really don't. I eat it, I make my own medibles and these people taught me how to do that. And you know what? I am off all those drugs, all of them. And it's been almost a year that I'm only using medical cannabis. So I want you guys to recognize that this is a good thing that can happen. States, for you guys to arrest people on cannabis and how many were only arrested on opiates? In Scranton, you guys are doing a disservice. We want tests, Commissioner. We want them. Bring them. But when those tests come out, I'm watching mothers treat adult autistic children with high THC and non-verbal become verbal. I'm watching this. It's out there. If you go out and just look, you'll, you'll witness it yourself. Because there are thousands of us out there that are helping each other and thank God. Now, my seeds, my seeds don't come medical, my seeds don't come recreational. They're seeds. I need to be able to afford my medicine too. So that's why I want recreational. I'm an adult. I can, I, I, I should be able to do what I can do, especially to treat my pain. So I, I'm very appalled by what happened, especially for people with disabilities. After my whole life, I've been working with people, people with disabilities. And for our own Lieutenant Governor, if y'all didn't see the, the video, please do, because our own Lieutenant Governor had to scold this woman and ask her to be quiet and she got up and left. So she's not listening to Lackawanna County people. She's not listening. So please, please listen to your people.
Yeah, but they won't hear you on ECTV. You got to put, you got to speak in the. Hit the green button, John. There you go, there you go.
To even have somebody suggest that, that there would be, that there'd be something under the Ethics Act with a disagreement of opinion at, at a public meeting is laughable and shows a complete lack of understanding. I understand the person is a, that just spoke is probably a zealot and that's how zealots act.
Thank you, John. Go ahead.
Hi. My name is Catherine Bowen. I live in Springbrook, Pennsylvania. I am a constituent of yours. In response to Mr. Bolus's comment, thank you for, you know, speaking up and your opinion. We appreciate it. We want to hear both sides. But in response to your comment, we are here about, we were there about adult-use cannabis, adult use. A sixteen-year-old could easily just drink, take opioids or any other illegal substance and drive. If you're under influence, you know, whether you choose to consume cannabis, alcohol, opioids, or whatever your drug of choice is, it's your personal responsibility. If I decide to drink a bottle of liquor and get behind the wheel of a car, it's my responsibility. I did that. Same thing, if you're one of your truck drivers says the same thing, it's their responsibility or your responsibility. You know, right, exactly. Permit it or not. You don't allow people to drink, you know, on the job. You shouldn't allow people to smoke cannabis on the job or do any other drugs on the job. Exactly. Okay, my point. I have just a question for Ms. Cummings. Are all disabled people confined to a wheelchair? Okay, I'm assuming that's a no. So I just want to say, as a representative of this county, you should be embarrassed defending your decision, decision to share, whether it's on your personal page or not, opposed shaming a disabled man that uses medical cannabis as a Christian, as someone in the medical fields, and as a human being. I am a constituent and I will be voting against you.
Anyone else? Name and address, sir.
My name's Vincent Matterson, 2118 Golden Avenue, Scranton. I'd like Ms. Cummings to point out potheads and despicable people that were at that meeting.
Well, the people that speak to me like you did in my Facebook, would you like me to go get that email?
Sure.
The one where you're calling me all kinds of words?
Sure, prove it. I didn't call you anything. I actually was very nice to you.
No, I have your email.
I, I was. I was asking you, who are you calling despicable? Potheads? And why would you repost such vile things people are putting out there as a county commissioner?
Legally, Commissioner, I, I would not address any questions on a personal, of a personal nature that had nothing to do with the issue. Wants to speak on the issue, let him speak on the issue, but legally, we're getting way out of line. We're getting way out of line here. And, and you can see the nastiness coming out.
No, I'm not nasty. I'm, I'm not trying to be nasty at all.
You fool everybody else in the room.
By asking a couple of questions? I'll take a ten-minute meeting with you if you're willing to. I understand that you've had your, your speech earlier, that you had issues with drugs and stuff in your family. I can understand where you're coming from. But you also, you know, there's other people that are getting help from this medication.
And there's some that aren't.
There's some that aren't, and that goes with anything. There's alcoholics.
I'll let you continue.
There's, there's all different kinds of people out there that use and abuse drugs. But then there were people that aren't using and abusing them, that this medication helps.
That's passed already. Medical's passed already. We're talking recreational.
I'm talking about people that can't afford to get their medical card. I'm talking about people that are suffering. That can't afford these two, three-hundred-dollar doctors and the fifty-dollar cards and all this money that they're trying to make off of sick people. That can't afford to go up and get their card and see doctors and go through all this. So if you like, and I never said anything nasty to you. I was quite nice to you. If you go back and look up my name, you'll see that you probably got me mixed up with somebody else. I would never do that. It's not who I am. But I would like ten minutes with you to explain where I'm coming from. You explained how you have family members that are addicted. I didn't start smoking and vaping until I was fifty-four. Because I got into an accident, worked for a trucking company. Okay? And it's helped me. Now, instead of all the arguing, how about we get together? How about we talk about it? Instead of this, how about we have a meeting with you and see if we can't get some. Why keep this going? Why keep the social media stuff going? Let's talk.
Where's my Lena?
She's right there.
Her assistant's right there, she could set up a time for you.
See Lena right there? Lena, raise your hand.
And I appreciate everybody's time here. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming in.
Make an appointment with her. I'd be happy to sit down and talk to any of you.
Okay, anyone else? Commissioner Cummings.
Okay. Um, first, I'd like to talk about a resolution that I would like to put before the board, and that is something that we've been talking about since, um, you know, we got into office. Commissioner O'Malley had graciously, um, agreed with me not to, um, let anyone go because of political reasons at the county level, so I'd like to, um, make a motion to put a resolution forward to make that a policy of the county. Now, Donnie, if that's something that we need to wait on, I, I'm sure we can do that because I know we have other...
We could draft something for the next meeting, Commissioner, if you want.
Well, I have something, if you wanna, now, it's long, though, so because of all this, I'd like to hold off and...
Let's set it up for the work, this work session.
Okay.
I'm utterly, absolutely for it, because I've seen so much money that been last year and...
Sure.
Well, we've saved thousands of dollars because of this action, so I would like to just get a yes or no from both of my commissioners to make sure we can pass this resolution when it goes through, that's all I want.
Okay. And if you wanna send a email, I'll look at it, and we can get it drafted into...
Can I count on you both for...
You don't worry, Matt.
Yeah, so Commissioner O'Malley, Commissioner Nottarianni, would you, would you agree to a resolution for this?
I would agree to talking about it, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. Uh, that's the first thing. Um, and I, I really do believe that that's something that we need to do, because no one should lose their job because of political affiliation, be they Democrat or Republican. I just disagree with that, and, you know, it is an election year, and come next year, I don't wanna see somebody losing their job just because of their political affiliation, I just don't wanna ever see that happen. And Commissioner O'Malley, you've been a victim of that, and it's, it's outrageous to do to someone.
And that's why I wouldn't let it happen, and that's why our...
I know, and I didn't realize that that was why. I was looking at it purely from a monetary point of view, because we save so much money.
Being fired with a, a young son, a brand-new baby boy, and a six-year-old that had some medical stuff going on at that point.
Yeah, and, uh, the second thing I wanna talk about, which is gonna be cut short now, which I felt was very important, was to read Chris Kelly's article in the paper, um, but I will refer everyone to that because it was, it broke, I mean, you, you break down in tears if you read this. Uh, Chris Kelly, grateful columnist takes first steps into a life of sobriety. Um, I just wanna, let me look at the camera. Chris, if you're out there, I just wanna congratulate you on taking the first step to sobriety, and from the bottom of my heart, I wish you well, because, um, I know all too well what you're going through, and I personally have not suffered at the hands of this other than through smoking cigarettes, um, but in my family, I have, and continue to fight that fight. So I'm with you in spirit and heart, and regardless of political opinions, I truly hope that you, you get to the point that you need to be at and continue, uh, to make progress in your efforts to sobriety. Um, your article brought me to tears, and, as well as my secretary, so I'm so proud of you, and I will support you anytime you need anything. Always feel free to reach out to us at the Commissioner's Office, because I would be happy to help in any way that I can, uh, that you feel would be helpful to you. And congratulations, and a great job, and so proud of, of where you, what you've achieved. Thank you for letting the public know. It takes a lot of guts and courage, uh, to tell people what you're going through like that, and, um, I just can't say enough about how proud I am of you, and, uh, thank you for sharing your story. Um, but I would encourage people to read his article, it's Chris Kelly, grateful columnist takes first steps into a life of sobriety. And, uh, it's heart-wrenching, it's, it's just beautiful, and I'm so, really great story, thank you for sharing that with us. Um, as far as the, uh, issues that are coming up with, um, with the, uh, medical marijuana, um, I don't have, everybody that knows me knows I don't have a whole lot of patience, um, that is one of my faults, and I think all of you here, 'cause, you know, look at Commissioners laughing, Commissioner Nottarianni, I get very passionate about issues that I, I am, um, passionate about, that's, that's all I could say. Um, you know, I have, as I said, been brought up in a, a family that chose to raise me, literally pulled me out of a home of abusive people that weren't even my parents, that were drunk and on drugs, um, saved my life, saved my life. A fifteen and sixteen-year-old person saved my life. I'm here today because of that. Um, you know, everybody has a story, and for other people to assume, uh, that they know better than the one that they're condemning, um, is what happens in society today. Um, and out of respect for the people that were at that, that seminar, um, I left because I didn't want to interrupt their meeting. So, um, I didn't feel that I could sit through all of that and, uh, respect the discussions that were going on, 'cause I've heard them all, I've heard, I've, I've been to many of their meetings, many, many, many of their meetings. In addition to that, I had other, other meetings I had to go to, so anyway. Um, you know, on the weekend, we have multiple places we have to go. So, um, when people say that, you know, they believe something works, or they've, they've seen it work, or they've used it and it worked, it doesn't make it a fact for everyone. The problem with marijuana is that there has not been any scientific studies at the federal level to prove or disprove its efficacy and safety, period. There's not been any. Yes, there's been anecdotal studies, yes, there have been people that have used it, yes, it's been used in California. But along with that, we have seen people that have, uh, been harmed by it. We have seen deaths due to marijuana, but they don't wanna talk about the deaths that have, uh, occurred because of marijuana. They don't wanna talk about an eleven-month-old baby that ingested it and died of cardiac arrest. They, they wanna, instead, when people speak up, what, what happens is they are attacked by a whole bunch of people from across areas that they speak in to stifle their free speech. This has got to stop. You have got to stop harassing people who, who talk and speak their mind. Everyone has the right to speak. What you don't have the right to do is condemn and attack people who use their freedom of speech. That is not right. You can't have a conversation with anyone if you're gonna automatically go on the attack and try and destroy someone. But that's what's happening in society today across the country and here in Lackawanna County. There's no reason for it. And, and people are going to say things on their personal Facebook pages that you don't like, I'm sorry to tell you, but it's, it's just a fact of life. But you have to start having a conversation with people. You don't go around trying to destroy their lives because of something they said. Since when did, did society come up to this point where, you know, we could just go and try and destroy someone's name or character or anything else just because of a statement made on Facebook? How is that reasonable? Where is the discussion in that? There's, there's no discussion in that. You know, just because you kids have a lot of kids out there that know how to use the internet, and have, you shared the, you shared that post that was not mine, I didn't share it, I shared it on my page, my personal page. That's the only place I put that, was on my personal page. You all went to my personal page where you aren't even friends of mine, and took a copy of that stuff and shared it across the internet to destroy somebody, period. Because you don't think that I should have my freedom of speech or my opinion, you disagree with what I say, so I must be wrong. Maybe I am wrong, but that doesn't give you the right to hurl accusations at a person. And I'm sorry, but that is, that is a problem, and that is harassment.
You said maybe you're wrong.
Shh.
Are you wrong?
Please excuse her. Uh, no, I didn't say I'm wrong, and I said maybe I am, if, if these studies come out differently. But the fact of the matter is, is that you all need to start, uh, changing the way you handle your disagreements with people, because it's not, it's not very, that, what you all did is harassment and bullying. Now, you all are supposed to be fighting against this, but yet you go out and do it. It's not right. It's not right. I, I'm, I'm, you had your time to talk, and I'm talking now. So, um, the fact of the matter is, is that if you don't like something on my personal page, come and talk to me about it. You could, you could come and have a meeting with me any time of the week, I have no problem with that. And I have never had a problem defending my positions on anything that I discuss, and everybody up here knows it, everybody in this county knows it. Um, and you aren't gonna bully me into changing my mind about a, a drug that I disagree becoming recreational, nobody is. I have seen the effects of, of marijuana, I have watched it, I have seen friends and family use it, and I know what it does. I'm not an idiot, I've seen it. And, um, it's not, it's not as safe as you all say it is. I've seen that the, the heart rates of people that have used it go up to a hundred and thirty beats per minute. It does have major side effects cardiac-wise, and, and there are dangers to it. And ingestion is even worse, so, um, I'm sorry, I'm going on, but, uh, you know, and I, I'm so sorry, because, you know, we have something that we really needed to talk about. Um, are we ready, or, okay? Um, that is much more important to me right now. I would just like to, uh, wish Commissioner Patrick O'Malley a happy fiftieth birthday party, party. Commissioner did not tell anyone that it was his, his birthday, and this is his fiftieth birthday.
Thanks, guys, thank you.
What I was smiling about was when you said, uh, I don't have patience.
Yeah.
I thought that's what, it was an amusing remark.
It's true. So I think at this time, I would like to give the remaining of my time that I have to Commissioner O'Malley to celebrate his fiftieth birthday. And everybody in the public, please wish Commissioner O'Malley a happy fiftieth birthday. Where's the black ones?
They didn't have any. So we went St. Patrick's Day. Right here.
Speech? Where's the candles?
Okay.
Where's the lighter?
I do, wait, wait one second, Mark, I do wanna get this out real quick.
Go ahead, you do that.
We are having, we are having our Easter party at McDade Park, which will be Saturday, April thirteenth, four to seven years of age, eleven-thirty to twelve-fifteen, and eight to twelve years of age, twelve-thirty to one-fifteen. Anybody has any questions, nine six three six seven six four. And I'd just like to wish, I'd like to wish everyone a happy and safe parade day and St. Patrick's Day, and, uh, please make sure you get downtown.